Meeting of July twenty twenty twenty. Fraser Planning Commission meeting to order. Mr. Plaschinski, can you put the flag up? So we can say that pledge allegiance. You know, all unmute and start I pledge allegiance. To the flag.
The United States of America. Read the book for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Governor Gretchen Whitmer's executive order twenty twenty dash fifty nine prohibits all public gatherings of any number of people until after July twenty twenty twenty. Therefore, the City of Fraser Planning Commission is meeting electronically in accordance with executive order twenty twenty dash forty eight. This notice is required to ensure that those wishing to observe and or participate in the meeting have the opportunity to do so. The planning commission's regular meeting is taking place this evening, Monday, July twenty 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 at seven P M. Using Zoom for video conferencing and public access. The public may attend and address the commission via the Zoom application, the Zoom website, and or telephone. The public will be able to listen to all discussion by commission members and will be permitted to address the commission during each agenda item and during public communications on non-agenda items. All members of the public wishing to attend or participate by telephone will be placed on hold in a virtual waiting room until the meeting starts and will be muted during the business portion of the meeting. The chairperson will unmute and recognize each member of the public in no particular order until all have had an opportunity to be heard. As always, residents are encouraged to email any comments or questions they may have on any agenda item to the city by four thirty P M. On the day of the meeting. The City of Fraser and the Planning Commission thanks everyone for their understanding and support as we all attempt to navigate these challenging times together. I'll move to agenda item two, roll call. Mr. Plaschinski, can you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cook?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Lornick?
Here.
Harry?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Farina? Is not here. And Zarnaki?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Agenda item three is approval of the agenda. Discussion on the agenda, any changes, discussion? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for July twentieth meeting as is.
Do you have support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Kyle and support by Commissioner Barr to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Then I am number four are my opening remarks. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda that was posted online. It is important to let everyone know that the planning commission is created by state law. The commission is comprised of seven members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The role of the planning commission is to plan and promote the efficient coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We are not here to negotiate with applicants or allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the planning commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others depending on the nature of the request and whether all of the standards of the zoning ordinance have been met. The planning commission may also impose conditions on proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are there. Other individuals sitting here this evening are the city attorney, Mr. Clark Andrews, city planner Doug Plaschinski, and Danielle Bouchard from McKennan Associates, as well as a few administrative people behind the scenes here. We will move to agenda item number five, approval of the minutes. Did everyone receive the revised rendition of the June three to twenty twenty minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion or any more changes to the minutes? If no discussion or changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve as revised.
I will make a motion to approve the revised minutes dated meeting of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty as printed.
Have support?
Support.
Okay, I think Commissioner Barr was there first. So it was moved by Commissioner Kyle and support by Commissioner Barr to approve the June three twenty twenty minutes as revised. All those in favor say aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Commissioners, Zarnaki?
Yes.
I think we decided that because we're doing these things by Zoom that it'd be better to do everything with a roll call vote instead of a I don't think it's important for the minutes, but when we get into other things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. That's what I thought for the minutes and agenda. Is that okay? Just?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number six is new business six A, City of Fraser zoning code technical review. Mr. Plaschinski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we discussed previously with the commission, the city administration asked us to proceed with a zoning ordinance technical review. Tonight, what I'm going to do is present our initial findings. If anyone has any comments, you can either bring them up during the during my walkthrough and I'll make notes in the document to circle back and address them. So that can be helpful, but rest assured, if you need more time to think about it or see something after tonight's meeting, just follow up with me with a phone call or email and I'll make sure that your concerns are included. So with that, I'm gonna go out of the PowerPoint and go into the technical review document.
Doug, would you prefer to have our comments as we go along or wait till you're done and?
Um. Really, why don't we do it as we go along unless it's voluminous, Clark?
Okay, good luck. I mean, I, some of the things I have are not necessarily comments, but just questions and probably you could answer them, but but I wanted these asked the questions and but but I did, I didn't get through the whole thing, but I did get through about half of it or something and you know, there's a fair number of questions, but I wondered whether whether you wanted those as we went along or at the end, or whether you wanted me to take those and put them separately.
Um, Clark, if you feel like you have a lot, we could always just schedule a short call in a day or two and go through, but if there's something you feel like the commission would have find value in the question being brought up, then please do.
Okay, that's good.
All right, let's. All right, is the memo on the screen?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So basically, and this is the third or fourth technical review I've done while working with McKenna. It's our practice to address zoning ordinance, and even if we're rewriting the entire thing, we start with an exercise of going through the document section by section and kind of writing down our initial impressions about what what is good, what is not good, what can be improved on, what might be contradictory. And we also take, then as we move out of the technical evaluation, we also get input from the stakeholders like the planning commission, the Z B A, the the city administration, so that we can try to work out all the bugs ahead of time. You know, we've got a few different things we look at. We've got the city zoning ordinance. We've got the history from the zoning board of appeals and summaries so that we can go back and look if there have been kind of a greater than or more frequent zoning board of appeals variance requests. We'll try to say, well, maybe this is something that needs adjusting in the zoning ordinance. There certainly is, you know, there is new zoning law that comes out that's you know, a part of just the legal processes at the, you know, both the state and federal level. An example of zoning at the local level is enforcing noise ordinances has been become different lately. It used to be kind of a very subjective measure, was permissible under law for a noise ordinance violation. Now they have to be very objective and very specific about the levels of noise that are broken and the hours so that and that's established by Michigan Supreme Court published case. On the flip side, you know, an example of a federal precedent is the removing content based sign ordinances, which is something that will come up later on in my presentation with the sign ordinance we have here with signs, you basically you can apply location, time period, and dimensional standards to signs you outside of obscenity or pornography, you can't really regulate the content of the sign. So if you have to read the sign to apply a regulation, you're likely violating a portion of the First Amendment of the the federal constitution. We've got all of our work in other communities. We've got the, you know, the feedback and working day to day with the planning commission. We take all those sorts of inputs and we go through the document and and like I said, we try to call out opportunities for improvement or correction or streamline. To getting straight into to Frazier and, you know, let me also point out, there are a couple of things in the Frazier ordinance, I really think are best practices with zoning and, you know, they've developed over the years in Frazier. I think, for example, the the zoning board of appeals section is really a best practice. I think measuring the setbacks from the planned center lines is really a best practice for front yard setbacks. I think there are a couple of other things we pick up on. And and I recommend looking at those best practices to other clients that we have at McKenna and, you know, I point directly to Frazier is having, you know, model components of their ordinance too. So kind of the first big section of the ordinance we look at is the definitions. There are a large chunk of every zoning ordinance. And there's a couple of things specific to definitions that we want to eliminate. We want to eliminate definitions that aren't used in the zoning ordinance. You know, so for example, in Frazier, community center is a zoning ordinance defined term, but there is no regulation applicable to a community center in the zoning ordinance. So without having a standard for it, we don't need to have the definition. It's just kind of added verbiage. You know, an alarm fence is another example. We look for redundant or outdated language like automobile wash versus car wash. There's automobile laundries are in some zoning ordinances. You know, really, we're talking about car washes. So trying to distill down to what the terms are commonly known as today and and have those so that they're applicable in the zoning context. Third, we try to look for zoning ordinance definitions that actually create a regulation. For example, just coming to mind, and there are some in this document. Another community I'm working with has regulations for mini warehouse or self storage units. Well, nowhere in their special land use section or the dimensional standards does it talk about fencing? But in the definition, it says that a mobile or excuse me, a mini warehouse is a fenced compound. So you're you're hiding this regulation that requires a fence in the definition rather than in the part of the ordinance where somebody's going to look to specifically apply that. So we want to make sure that, you know, if there is a regulation that's kind of hiding out as an Easter egg in the definitions that we we move those into the appropriate part of the zoning ordinance if they still apply. There any questions about? Now, as you can see, there there's about a couple of pages of of just those sorts of.
I have, Clark, I have a question about the comment about carryout restaurant. I always thought of a carryout restaurant as one where most of their business came from people that were coming in to pick up something like a pizza or a submarine or whatever and that and that the fast food tended to be more like a Burger King or McDonald's with it as it most or a lot of their business would drive through. Aren't those somewhat different?
Well, I think that from a definition point of view, whether you call it carryout or fast food, the the main part, like you said, Clark, is that the majority of people are being served food that's in disposable containers that's intended for either being eaten on premises or taken away from premises, right? So whether that has a drive through or not, you know, that still is, you know, we would end up splitting hairs. I mean, is Subway a carryout restaurant or a fast food restaurant? Some of them don't have drive throughs, but all of them, the food is served in a packaging that allows you to take it away.
So what you're saying is there's not really no rational basis to treat them differently, whether whether they're a fast food restaurant or whether they're carryout and and irrespective of whether they have a drive through or they don't have a drive through. Isn't that right?
Right, the drive through is the operative difference. So, you know, I and in particular in the Frazier zoning ordinance, it says carryout and fast food restaurants are special land uses. So then you do have kind of these fast casual places that don't have reusable dishes or staff service to tables and that's a growing trend. So, you know, that again, you know, we don't want every Subway to have to come in for a special land use approval if it's not really, you know, it's just kind of the way the use has evolved to today. But it is a good point and and it definitely is, you know, this is not the first zoning ordinance that has multiple definitions for restaurants.
I have another question about that. In 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 Frazier, are most of the locations of, say, these carryout restaurants that might might have initially been in small strip centers or places like that? Are they, do they back up to residential or are they in places where residential areas would not be impacted? Because I think that that was the reason that carryouts got treated as special blue land uses, even though they didn't have a drive through was there was a concern that they had later hours and, you know, kids would hang out in front of them and create noise and things like that and litter and so forth, even though there wasn't a drive through. But if if most of those carry, if 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 most of those types of places are not near residential and not likely to have an impact on on people's ability to enjoy their residence or whatever, then seems to me they can be pretty much the same.
Well, I think that most of those uses in Frazier are relatively close to residential because most of the commercial areas are fairly narrow and concentrated up towards the road. So whether it's in the the general commercial, the neighborhood commercial, or the the downtown business district, you know, relatively, if if we're talking about, you know, immediately adjacent or within a couple hundred feet, they're all pretty close, right? I mean, Frazier has a dense, compact development pattern. I have no issues with requiring carryout slash fast food restaurants to um to have special land use. I just, you know, it, I want to try to clarify that in the zoning ordinance. You know, and then I really maybe just talk about, you know, adding, you know, bolting a drive through on and have the regulations and what the planning commission looks at, kind of focusing on those sorts of
That makes sense.
Potential nuisances like one thing Randy brought up during Taco Bell is making sure that the the headlights were screened coming out of the drive through. Even though, you know, that's onto a road, there may be other configurations. You know, I I think that's a useful, you know, potential regulation that we can talk about with drive up uses that we wouldn't apply to just a carryout restaurant. So.
Doug, I have a few questions.
Certainly.
Okay, one of your bullet points is to remove house, common trailer, and define it as mobile home. I'm wondering if mobile homes should be actually classified or labeled manufactured home? I I'm thinking that mobile is kind of a outdated term for the HUD policy back in nineteen seventy six, but I could be incorrect.
We should update the language to be consistent with the current Michigan law. And you're right, you know, seldom are mobile homes or trailer homes actually moved. I think this bullet point is more to the to that we have a definition for both a house trailer and a mobile home.
Okay. Another question was the consider the relocation or removal of open front store as could be considered as transient business? And then you referenced chapter nineteen and I'm not sure where we find chapter nineteen. Is that a code? That's on your second page at the very bottom, close to the bottom. They're pulling it up from the second page. On page three, I should say.
Here on the I'm sorry, what was?
Page three, there you go. They're pulling it up.
Okay, I'll add a note to.
I suspect that that's a reference to a city code provision relating to the regulation of transient businesses. I'm not sure of that, but that would be my educated guess.
Yes.
Yeah, so from from the other sections of the zoning ordinance?
No, from this
Or city code?
City code, the regulatory part.
Yep, you're right. That does, the city does have some regulations on that. That's where that came from.
And my last question is on page four, your final bullet. I don't know if that should be discussed. It says to consider combining or condensing the definitions for yard, nonrequired and required. Didn't know if you wanted to discuss that, not that I have any comment on it. I would say probably do both, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think we'll just, we'll look at a clarification. Required yards are basically the setback areas, right? So then if you have, you know, it goes back into the the terms aren't necessarily interchangeable, so we just need to be careful that they're clear and that they're used consistently throughout the remainder of the ordinance. Kind of like buildings and structures. So a really common problem in zoning ordinances is that buildings and structures are, the terms are used interchangeably and they mean very different things, right? So, you know, for example, a a building is basically something with walls and a roof. It's an enclosed space. A structure is any physical improvement on the ground. I mean, if you want to really get technical about it, some people might even call, you know, landscaping structures. So they mean different things. So even though, and and I catch myself all the time talking about structures, the point of our yards and setbacks is really to keep buildings out of them. You know, so if you were to say somewhere in the zoning ordinance that like, hey, no structures are allowed in a required yard, well, how are you going to have a driveway? You know, it's it's getting into more specific. So just making sure those terms are used consistently is really the the most important part.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I also had a similar thought or question as it related to the to the building line and the front setback line. I always thought of a building line as 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 if if a site has got an existing building on it, even if it's not not set at the setback line that 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 building line or the the front, the sideline that goes from lot line to lot line from the edge of the building, I always thought of that as the building line and the setback line to be the the apparel line to that that is that is right at the setback line. I I don't really have a problem with, as long as, as long as it's clear in it what you're talking about. And I had the same thought about there are some places in the ordinance where it seemed like the definition of of the front yard was such that you could have a a a yard area that say on a corner lot that could could in this, depending on the definition of front yard, could actually have two front yards. And and yet I saw in another spot that you made a distinction of of this street side side yard or whatever. And I don't think it makes any difference. I've seen it in different ordinances, different ways, but you gotta, we have to make sure that it's consistent that if you have a corner lot, is that area on that street, on the side street? Is that going to be considered a side yard or is that going to be considered a front yard? Because sometimes the the regulate, the regulations that apply to that are very different, whether it's one or the other. And I just think that you need to make sure that it's clear. I don't care where, I don't think it makes any difference which way we do it, as long as we consistently apply it.
Yeah, and I can tell you, you know, from very recent experience this year in two different communities, that very issue about what is the front yard and what is the street side yard have meant, you know, that determination has meant
There has consequences.
Yes, for for two different, you know, a property in Grosse Pointe and a property in Lake Orion, the same questions came up and that, you know, it's a really it's not always an easy answer. So you're right, making sure it's consistent is important. So yeah, I added a note there too. So, you know, those are the kinds of definitions and, you know, when when I get to the end of this, I'll talk a little bit about next steps.
Was was your thought, Doug, that that the sign ordinance updating in in light of that Reed case was going to be done as part of this or was that, I originally thought that Don thought, Don and Sarah were thinking that that was a a separate project or topic, but I I I guess my question was is, I wondered how much effort we want to put into the sign ordinance provisions if we were going to rewrite it or whether that rewrite is taking place as part of this review?
Well, I think that they need to happen. And I think that the sign ordinance changes should have a good foundation. So I'd like to see even if we kind of compartmentalize that specific task in this effort and maybe do it alongside it with a deeper dive into it. What I'd hate to do is say, you know, we're not going to touch it till we're done with everything else here.
Yeah, I hear you.
So maybe, maybe in August is going to be here before we know it. Maybe September or October, we have a you know, we do the second planning commission meeting. you know, we do the second planning commission meeting, and we just have a working session that is a little bit of, um, you know, education about the legal basis, um, a little bit of state of the practice. We introduce what's going on with the Frazier sign ordinance, and then also, uh, one thing Frank brought up during the ZBA meeting was, several years ago, there was a effort to rewrite the sign ordinance, um, before the content neutral issue came to light, um, and there were some recommendations that apparently were, brought up. So I'd like to get a hold of that document and see, um, you know, how some of those past recommendations could be woven into a, a sign ordinance update.
Okay.
Hi Frank.
Hi, I'm sorry.
No worries. I was just talking about you and the, uh, the sign ordinance update. Trade, Frazier initiated a few years ago that didn't materialize.
Right.
So, we, we were talking about signs. Um, Clark, does that sound like a good approach?
Yeah, no, I, I just, I, I just wanted to understand which direction we're going because yeah, I, I think it's appropriate to eliminate things like definitions of political signs and so forth, because that's not something that you can regulate anymore because it's content-based, but, um, I just, I just didn't know, uh, you know, which approach you were taking. I, I, um, the other thing is, is that, um, you know, if we, if we, if we, uh, shift the sign ordinance out as a completely different project, it seems like it's hard to ever get back to it. And then in the meantime, you got a ordinance that's probably way out of sync with where it ought to be. And, and to the extent that we can move it in the right direction, that would be better than, than not doing it, you know?
Well, not that we need a vote, but it could, um, and Frank, what I suggested with signs was is that maybe, uh, in September, October, we take the, the, uh, second meeting date for planning commission and kind of have a deep dive on the zoning ordinance as it relates to signs specifically, and do a little bit of education about legal, current legal challenges, kind of current state of the practice, and then, um, reviewing the recommendations from the past initiative in Frazier, and then just, you know, try to, uh, you know, have a kind of a mini ordinance charrette or, or discussion and consensus about signs. You know, from the group, does it sound like something that the commission would be interested in?
Yes, yeah.
Clark, could I, could we work, yes?
Sure, I, I'm sorry. I, I would like to, uh, perhaps get Don involved in that because he is re, he worked on the sign ordinance rewriting in, in these two, these two, two different communities already and, um, but, um, I, I think we can do that. I, I like the idea of trying to tackle that at, at some point relatively soon because that case is now several years old, and I think it's time that we update it.
Kathy, I think Frank has his hand up.
Mr. Farina?
Hi, uh, just to let you know, Doug, I've gone through all my stuff here, uh, and I, I must have thrown, thrown it away, so I have somebody else, I have Roseanne looking for it.
I have, I have the original sign ordinance that, that was rewritten.
Oh, do you really?
Yeah, I've got a copy of it in my computer.
Oh, okay.
So we can.
Why don't you send me, send it to me on email, and I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you, Randy. I was also going to say, I, I met with, uh, Pat Maher a couple weeks ago and, uh,
Oh, good.
Got a bunch of the old files from Frazier.
Good.
It, it may be in there, I haven't looked yet.
After, because I mean, it was a long process. It was well over a year of meetings to develop what, what we came up with, and, uh, it's just that the council only adopted a small portion of it.
Okay, well, maybe, um, you know, in advance of our kind of, uh, workshop on signs, we can, um, Randy, I talked with you and you can give me some impressions about what the roadblocks were to implementing all of it.
Yep, no problem.
That sounds good. Okay, so, sounds like we've got, uh, some definite plans for moving forward. You know, I'm going to sort of breeze through the rest of the highlights, um, as we go through. Uh, if I missed something or anything, uh, raise your hand or call out.
Doug, I just, this is Clark again. I wa- wondered, is there a provision in the Frazier ordinance that says, um, if something is not a listed as a, a use that's either permitted or a special land use, that it would not be allowed?
I believe there may be, because that's the way we've interpreted a couple of things.
Okay, well, I, I think that's, make a note to see if we can find that. I mean, it seems logically it might go in that article to application and interpretation, but that didn't seem to me like it was as direct as I thought it was going to be. And I think that's important because there are some instances where you'll have a use that is not mentioned in the ordinance at all, and, and some, some developer type people will say, well, since it's, since it's not listed, then I can do it. And we would like to say that if it's not listed, then it's prohibited, you know, and you'd rather either amend the ordinance or get a use variance or do something like that.
Right.
I think that's a fairly important provision.
Well, and, and take for example, um, medical marijuana growing.
Yeah, it's a good example.
You know, it's not there, can, if, if we have to have it somewhere, um, the industrial district, see, uh, controlled district allows for light manufacturing and assembly of already processed products. I think, I may have this backwards, and the other district, uh, focuses on more, things more like processing natural or basic materials into components. So that would be like where you have, you know, a, a stamping plant or a smelter or something like that. So, you know, even if it's not listed, the intent, you know, you can sort of get there, you, you could view it, but if we have something like Clark suggested, if it's, if it's not listed and it's not pretty darn close, assume it's prohibited. I, I think that would be helpful. See, getting into this, uh, approving plaits, plaits and site condos need to follow basically the same process. We'll take a look at both of those.
I, I have a comment about that, and that is that the, that, um, they are certainly similar, uh, pro- similar process, or similar end results, but they, but they are in two different statutes and, and, um, I think we need to make sure that, that, while we end up with the same result, uh, there, there's a couple of things that have to go through. The, the, the plant process has more involvement in the planning commission than the, the site condo thing because there's more steps. I mean, you gotta, you gotta go to, uh, through several, you know, preliminary plant review and fi- final plant review and so forth. So, um, I don't disagree that they ought to be treated similarly, but the process is a little bit different, and I think we should make sure it's clear what that is. And lots of communities are not very clear about how they want to regulate the, the procedure for site condominiums.
A- and I, I think where I'm going with this, I know I, I worked, Clark, with one community in Oakland County that would have a public hearing at planning commission, then a public hearing at the board, and then another public hearing at the planning commission for final, then another public hearing at the board, um, for site condos, but those requirements were not the same as plaits.
Right.
I think what I'm saying is, you know, in general, the steps should be fairly consistent, even though there are called some different things, and depending on a plat versus a condo, you may have different documentation that's in there.
Right, okay.
Kathy, Frank has his hand up.
Commissioner Farina, I apologize, I don't see you.
I'm sorry. Oh, my camera's offline.
That's fine. I don't see your hand either, but go ahead, please.
Okay, uh, Doug, didn't, didn't, uh, Don Denault give us something on site condos and the steps to follow that he, uh, that we laid out for, um, so that we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to be in the dark about that? Do you remember that, Clark?
I do not, but I can check with him. I, I, I'll make a, I'll make a note of it and,
I thought after the judge came in for his, uh, site condos and, um,
You, you may be right about that. I, that, that kind of, that kind of rings a bell now that you mentioned the, the judge thing, but, uh, um, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Don about the, uh, that. But there ought to be, that, there, there ought to be something in the ordinance that's a part of the ordinance because under the zoning enabling act, basically, you have, you have to tell people what they have to do to get approved, it's so that they know upfront what that is. And I, and I don't remember us doing a, an ordinance amendment that, that incorporated provisions relating to site condominiums, and if we want that to be part of our review process, I think that should be incorporated into this, uh, technical review. I think you're right, though, that Don did talk to the, the, maybe the ZBA or somebody about the fact that it'd be a good idea to have a process that was built into the ordinance.
Right, so that everybody knew we didn't have to feel our way through.
Yeah, exactly.
Awesome, yeah, let's see if we can get our hands on that, Clark.
Yep, I made a note about it.
Um, section thirty-two, thirty-seven says that there's brick requirements and alterations. In the code, it currently allows, I believe, uh, the building official or the planner to allow acceptable alternate materials, because the facades are part of site plan approval. I really believe that if, uh, even if it, it's just as a, a short amendment, um, that if something changes with a facade, that the planning commission's approved, um, that, like, let's say it goes from brick to being something completely, you know, cement board, um, as a proposal, that it should come back to the planning commission, and they should determine, because it's part of their initial approval. So that, you know, just sort of clarifies that, and again, centers the, the authority. It's, it's, it sounds like a pain, but we want, you know, people, we don't want bait and switch with facades, and that happens a lot. You know, I, I, I know it, 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 it's not, it shouldn't be onerous, as long as everything's planned out ahead. Corner clearances are mentioned a couple different times in the ordinance, so we've got, uh, you know, internal and external cor- corner clearance. I think there's an opportunity to combine that and, uh, lay it out with some graphics. Engineering code, we can reference the city's engineering code chapters and have them linked.
I had a question about that. I, when you actually, um, searched the, the city zoning ordinance and, and, um, uh, and the city code, there's only like one reference to engineering code, and there's several other references to, uh, engineering standards or engineering that, it seems like the terminology is not consistent, so I think we should clean that up a little bit.
That's a good point, Clark. Probably, it might be listed as like streets and sidewalks or stormwater standards.
Yep, because if you look, if you look for something called the engineering code, you're not going to find it. I mean, there's something, there's something like engineering development standards or something, but it's not called the engineering code, and, um, I think we should clean up some lines with there.
Excellent. I know, uh, I know with fences, there have been, um, there are some differing fence standards, and there's standards in chapter nine of the city's ordinances that talk about fences. We want to try to group those together in one place, um, particularly fences that are outside the single-family zoning districts, because the planning commission have, has approval over those, or it's actually kind of a separate process, so we want to iron that out. And, you know, I'd prefer to try to have it, instead of a special fence determination, have it be a site plan amendment if there's changes, um, or if the planning commission feels like it can be handled through an administrative permit, then they handle it that way. Uh, so we'll, we'll get into that. The, uh, garage sales, uh, just so everybody's aware, there have been a, at least one major garage sale that happened this year that, um, was on one of the more narrow streets. Uh, the neighbors got upset with each other, um, you know, it, it was spread out over two weekends, which of course the current code allows, because I think it, you're allowed nine days, um, to have a, a garage sale on premise. It doesn't really talk, it, it doesn't provide a lot of detail about the kinds of, uh, products you, you should be selling. So I think that in some cases, people may bring stuff from somewhere else to sell at their house, and that's not really the point of having a garage sale. It's to sell the content of that house, those household goods, not just to sell household goods, which could be from anywhere or anybody else's house. So I think we may, uh, go through the standards and just see if there's any sort of updating or changes that, um, would make, um, would make better neighbors.
In connection with that, is there any thought to, I know in some communities, they allow like a subdivision wide sale once a year, twice a year, whatever, to try to not have garage sales on everybody's property all the time and, and, but obviously you're, you're, you know, I don't know, I, I guess there's pros and cons to it, but we should at least think about it. I do think that it's, it's kind of increasingly common that, I think, for, for people in a neighborhood to consolidate garage sales that, you know, where multiple people have, have sales at the same time or in the same place in order to not end up having a fifty garage sales every single weekend during the summertime.
For sure. I, uh, chairs are necky, Frank has his hand up.
Commissioner Farina, please, thank you.
Thank you, um, I, I know there, in our subdivision anyway, there was one, one man who was buying, uh, closeouts and having garage sales every week, and, uh, the, the neighbors were getting very upset with that.
Yeah, that should not be allowed. That's not.
Yes, I, I think at a minimum, we're gonna, we're gonna try to button that down. I know, uh, Commissioner Farina, that same situation happened out in Texas Township when I was there, and, uh, I believe was sort of the case in the more recent issue in another part of the city of Frazier. So, um, you know, I think, uh, I think there's definitely some improvements to what we can do regulation-wise. Just, you know, it, it helps make better neighbors, and not that we want to police everybody's, um, neighborliness, but, you know, I went by the one that was causing problems, and there were a lot of people there, and the neighbors all had pounded stakes into the ground up by the road to keep people from parking on the street. It's a narrow street anyway, it's really just wide enough for a couple cars, uh, to pass each other. It's not, does not have a parking lane on it or really that much room. So, yeah, I, I think that it's, it can be a sensitive issue. I don't really see too much more that we've talked about. One thing I want to bring up, anywhere in the zoning ordinance, and this is up recently, where we might have the need to record easement language at, as part of an approval or to have an easement. I think we really need to specify that it, that those easements includes a city review, a, a proper execution, and then recording them at the register of deeds.
I agree.
Yeah, that just is. It's, you know, it's, every community has had easements here or there. And, and if somebody decides, if two neighbors now don't come to the city for anything and they decide to, to do a handshake easement, there's nothing we can do to stop them. But if it's a record that we're depending on as part of an approval, we should just make sure it goes through that process, so we can check the box off. See, general exceptions, I found a clause in the, under high limitations and exceptions, and where it allows certain sales or building architectural features that might be approved or considered as part of site plan would actually go to the ZBA for approval. I would prefer to have that approval or ability to stay with the planning commission, just because anytime you send something to the ZBA, you're really sending it into the kind of quasi-legal direction. Because the planning commission can't go back and review a ZBA decision. The venue for ZBA, for appealing a ZBA decision is court. And we always want to try to keep planning in the hands of the planners that are appointed for the community and then the elected representatives before it ends up in court. So I'd rather the planning commission, and I have some sample language to, to make those kinds of decisions. Things like, in some of the other communities I've worked in, clock towers, performing arts centers and the bridges that they have for the stages, that sort of thing would be part of those. Yes, Commissioner Farina has his hand up.
Well, didn't, isn't that why the city council took themselves out of the, out of the, the zoning issues? Is to non-politicize them and to make them non-political in nature and to, to throw them toward the court? I mean, that, that's, they, the, the zoning in Fraser used to be done by the city council, right? And it was unchanged, Randy can probably tell you better than I can, you know, about that, but, I mean.
Yeah, back in the old days, it was zoning, ZBA was performed by a council at, at their meetings. That was in the sixties and early seventies, I believe, and that changed.
Well, and the city, the, the city charter could have, could establish council as the planning commission and the ZBA. And that would be completely legal. You know, but in, in Fraser's case, they've, they've separated those out. I know, I work with two cities where the city council is the planning commission. If a site plan comes up, they pause the city council meeting, open a planning commission meeting, have their public hearings, and they'll even make a recommendation to themselves from the planning commission. So, you know, maybe, maybe, Don and Clark and the city administration, we can discuss this a little bit more and make sure we're in the right direction, because there may be some other changes as part of the ordinance.
I agree.
I, I would just rather, again, from a, a practical standpoint, you guys are the planners, you're the ones that are known that, that are appointed to try to make these decisions. If we have the ZBA do everything, then that's just as, you know, beyond handling variances. Then that could have the, the opposite effect where, you know, we could send everything that is allowed to the ZBA. And then, you know, we would, I, I've worked in other communities, my last community I worked at, McComb Township. If you look at their zoning map, most of their developments were, were actually done through consent judgment. Their approach was just deny it and we'll figure it out in court. And I think that's the, the opposite end of the spectrum, so we don't really want that either. In the end, we want good planning, and hopefully our decisions are non-political, anyway, they're just good planning sense. Getting on to Article Five, environmental provisions, we have a lot of screening inconsistencies, so we'd like to just kind of narrow down and get some specific screening requirements and make them consistent for different zoning districts, probably including some graphics in there. Again, making sure that landscaping is consistent. Sign regulations, I think we've talked about the sign regulations. I think regardless of our approach, they need to be broken out and given their own article. And not really leave them hidden in the environmental provisions. Lighting, the lighting standards in Fraser are really good. Just need to reference that over to the plant approval standards. Off-street parking and loading, probably what we did start to review, we did review. And the, the commission changed requirements for parking in general, commercial and industrial districts, I think. We'll probably just need to take a look at the other districts and uses and, and see if there anything needs to be adjusted. You know, there also might, we should probably have some short standards about parking spaces. It might include charging stations, motorcycle parking, bicycle parking, that kind of thing. Just so that if somebody does want to install that, that they've got dimensional standards to work from. I know at Partridge Creek, there's a charging station where the, the plugs are on the wrong side of the parking spaces. So you can't, you know, you can't park it to charge. So, you know, for whatever reason, we just need to try to make sure they're set up correctly. Site plan review requirements, this is one of the things that I promote to other communities. I think Fraser has, as far as their submission requirements, some of the best submission requirements of any community I work in. And I like that there's a provision where if there's a site plan or a site plan amendment that doesn't need a certain level of information, the commission can make their decision and acknowledge that they don't need that level of information. Say if no exterior lighting is being affected by a site plan amendment, we don't need a new photometric plan. You know, I, I think that's something that a, a lot of communities overlook. Residential and recreation districts, we've got a few different items, one thing that was brought up at the ZBA is to make sure that no buildings or accessory structures disrupt utility easements. So we'll check the language and, and make sure that, you know, that structures aren't inappropriately placed in those easements. Take a look at unit type sizes.
You know, on that three bedroom unit that you're looking at there, I think there's a typo there, I think that's supposed to be twelve hundred, isn't it?
I think you're right, Clark, and that, that was brought up, they caught that at the ZBA also.
Okay, alright.
And also making sure that we call efficiency the same thing, is it efficiency, is a studio, what are we calling it? The rec district is something that I think is, you know, really kind of a, a current best practice, and the city's rec district, I think, addresses, you know, those uses in the community. But the part, most of the parks and city-owned areas are not zoned recreation. So, you know, that may be an option to promote recreation, open space, and to more align the current land uses with the zoning map.
Doug, can we go back to your second bullet under the multi-family residential? Where it says to consider the two and a half stories and three stories.
Right.
I'm assuming that we're going to go to three stories, we did have that conflict with one of our site plan approval.
I think that that's a good idea, half stories are generally just kind of frustrating. But in this, you know, it, it may also be appropriate to have a scaling setback. If you, you know, so we'll take a look at that, if, you know, if the side yard setback, and I don't know what it is, is, you know, X amount of feet for two stories or two and a half stories, maybe we add, you know, an equal amount. To, to set it back a little bit more, just to make sure there's adequate light and air. So we definitely look at that, that's good to know there was a conflict. The office, the commercial districts, I don't think there was a whole lot. A big thing through all the uses, though, there, in some cases, the, the uses try to include everything. And I think that the intent of the zoning ordinance districts, you know, don't mean that you don't need to list out all of the different kinds of retail, as long as you encapsulate and describe the levels of retail appropriately. Like neighborhood retail means something that, a, a retail operation that would provide goods and services to the adjacent neighborhoods. You know, having a Havardashery and Millerney, all the kind of old terms that described all the, the really niche kinds of retail establishments, we can clear that up and make it a little bit more straightforward.
You know, I, Doug, I think some of that comes from, at one point, I think Fraser was, was operating with some references to the standard SIC code or whatever, and that has a lot of outdated terminology in it. And, and I think some of that has been removed, but not necessarily all of it.
Yeah, so this is our chance to just kind of modernize it a little bit.
Right.
See, we've got a chance to kind of clarify the adult-oriented businesses. You know, with the planned unit development approvals, again, PUDs should sort of be in their own article, separate from special land use, even though the Fraser ordinance does set them up following the same process as special land use approval. There may be, and my suggestion's twofold, one is just to kind of give them their own space to work. The other is that there may be some suggestions out of the master plan process that the PUDs can be more surgical with different regulations. The rest of the special land use approvals are pretty consistent. Some language updates, trying to think if there's anything big. You know, again, we would go through all of these recommendations and highlight any changes to the existing ordinance to implement them. Again, like, another big thing that would probably, will probably take a discussion is consolidating the elderly housing standards. We've got a couple of different references or kinds of those facilities. So you've got, you know, licensed, their state license standards versus kind of senior apartments. So we can take a look at those a little bit more holistically. Think there's a whole lot else through here, the non-conform law supports of appeals section is a model practice, as I mentioned. The temporary uses approval by the city manager, I know we've talked about temporary uses. I think actually, after witnessing the city administration, that the way Fraser's zoning ordinance handles it is a, is a model standard. So getting into kind of our overarching conclusions, and, and I know this is a, a lot of density. So that's why I really want to encourage the commission to take a look at it in your own time, digest our discussion. If anything comes to mind, just, you know, write it down, send an email, drop me a line, and we can make sure it will include it. It's not as if tonight was your chance to talk about it, this is ongoing. We're certainly going to be working on it for several more months to get it ready. And, and this was brought up at the zoning board of appeals. Out of this, you know, there's going to be suggestions from the master plan about zoning changes to implement the plan vision. It's important that implementing those master plan recommendations happens on a good foundation. And right now, the foundation we have is sort of shifting around a little bit. We know there are some things that, that just make sense to do, to make it more intuitive, to make it easier to follow, to button down some legal issues before they become issues. So, just as Clark kind of suggested, what do we do first? Well, I think we give the zoning ordinance the good foundation first, and then we can have, you know, those implementation discussions out of the master plan, and they're done, you can get them done and in without having to rearrange stuff necessarily to the same extent. So I think it's really important to get to that part. The other thing is there are some functional difficulties in the current zoning ordinance that the building department runs into, that I run into as a zoning administrator. So getting those shaken out will help us in the meantime. You know, there are some parts of the ordinance that are great, there are some parts that are opportunities for improvement. There's opportunities to, you know, to put some regulations in the same section that should be. And then there's an opportunity to give some regulations their own sections that make them easier to find and, and allow them to stand out more clearly. We want to make sure in our rewrite that all measurements are presented consistently, that we use, that we don't use abbreviations that aren't appropriate. Make sure that regulations are not hidden in other requirements or definitions. Make sure the planning commission modifications are kind of, that, you know, that are, they stand out. And there may be other places where the planning commission wants some, you know, a little bit of subjectivity. You know, it's, for example, was the, the commercial and industrial parking. We just added some subjectivity to allow the planning commission some discretion, rather than having a, you know, a direct molded objective standard. We want to make sure that regulations don't conflict. We'll have that discussion about the ZBA's role, you know, and how to make sure good planning happens, that we don't kick everything unnecessarily to a legal path. We'll take a look at the current legal standards. We'll make sure that the notice requirements and public hearing requirements are clear and all referenced in the same section. I think they're spread out in a couple of sections. You know, so I, I think that there's a lot of opportunity here, and it's really not as daunting as it sounds. You know, I certainly want to propose a timeline that includes the planning commission in the discussions. And I think maybe for a couple of months, we can have those. maybe for a couple of months, we can have those kind of deeper dive workshop type second meetings to get results. As Randy and Frank alluded to with the past work on the sign ordinance, sometimes zoning changes end up being very long discussions, and that's okay. But you know, we want to make sure that we get something that's more usable and up to date for the, for 2020 also. So you know, we'll try to have some very tactical exercises and discussions to, to get those decisions made through a consensus the best we can to, to move together to have a zoning ordinance update. You know, it'd be nice to get that foundation set, you know, around the same time the master plan goes to Ritz conclusions. So I'm thinking, you know, second quarter of next year, trying to have something together and, and ready to go. So I know that's a lot of information. Does anybody have any other questions before I conclude?
Doug?
Yes, sir.
I think a good practice would be adding graphics in that. We, we always had a problem with that, and then some reprints eliminated some of the graphics, but the graphics always came in handy for showing a lot of stuff in the Z B, in the zoning ordinance.
I agree, Randy, and one of the great things about McKenna that I've learned since I started here is not only do we have a library, but I've got graphics people that I can ask to just make a graphic and they can do it. So I don't have to figure out how to make a picture of a house or something like that. So we'll definitely try to include as many graphics as possible in the, in the code.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Plisensky and Mr. Warnock. Thank you. It's a great suggestion to see graphics. Good job, Doug. A lot of hard work. Thank you very much.
Well, I, I would like to point out Danielle probably did at least as much, if not more of this analysis than I did. So credit goes a lot to her too.
Credit to you, Ms. Bouchard. Thank you very much. Mr. Plisensky, can you verify there's no one in the audience who would like to speak on this outside? Anybody call in from the outside?
Yes, I am not seeing anybody.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go on to agenda item number seven, unfinished business, city of Fraser master plan. Who is going to address this?
Danielle will be presenting. Danielle, I just clicked allowing you to screen share, so let's hope.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. Okay, can you guys all see it?
Yes.
Cool. Um, so basically, tonight we're going to briefly go over the goals and objectives that we came up for with the, for the master plan. I can just go over these pretty quickly and just kind of, if anybody has any questions or comments, feel free to interrupt me and jump in whenever you see fit. Please note that these goals and objectives from the objectives is where you're going to branch off and find your implementation measures for each. So these are kind of more of like conceptual overarching, you know, goals for the master plan and then for the next 20 years. Just a quick review from what Sarah presented a couple, I think that was two months ago on the 1990 master plan. They had these 10, that plan had these 10 following goal topics, which we kind of morphed into a more modern version and something more applicable to Fraser today. Because this was, you know, or was 30 years ago. So for the, we kind of narrowed this down and updated it to the five following overarching goals, which include residential neighborhoods, commercial and economic development, transportation, recreation, sustainability and beautification. Again, if anybody has any other ideas, questions, comments as we move forward, please let me know. Also, I'm available for, you know, phone and email after this as well, if you're kind of mulling this over in your head for the next couple of days. So for residential neighborhoods, I understand that this slide is a little text heavy, but I can just kind of give you the highlights. Essentially, the main purpose of this goal is to support and preserve existing stable neighborhoods in the city, but also encourage new and modern residential development as well as identify gaps in the current housing stack. This is kind of where you would see your A A R P livability guidelines and principles kind of come in, so kind of encourage development and redevelopment that are accommodating to people all stages of life, all physical capabilities, ages, backgrounds. This kind of also, we would like to encourage maintaining current neighborhoods and the way that they currently exist and, you know, what makes Fraser a great place to live. These would remain, these neighborhoods remain generally the same, but you know, perhaps just minor enhancements over time, such as sidewalk maintenance, streetlights, repairs and upkeep, walking paths, bike paths, that kind of thing. Another avenue to explore with this goal is to determine if there are any vacant properties and developments that can be repurposed or redeveloped, redeveloped into new housing. This kind of coincides with, you know, the, the changing times in the city and how you have kind of an older, older folks that may need more senior housing or, you know, to kind of encourage diversity of housing types. And then as well as kind of identifying perhaps underutilized areas that can be infilled with more housing or additional housing that can accommodate people of all ages and incomes. Perhaps such as large parking areas that are underutilized or commercially uses that are underutilized and kind of encourage that mixed use, live, work, play elements. The next one we have is not commercial and economic development. Essentially, this purpose is to support existing businesses, but also encourage a diversity of new businesses and redevelopment of any commercial or industrial vacancies where appropriate. Essentially, this kind of sort of fits along with the previous goal and that the city should be walkable, bikeable, which it is, you know, for a little over four square miles. So that's a very bikeable distance. So we kind of want to incorporate those livability elements in every kind of single aspect that as we move through the plan. One thing that I did want to bring up to the group is there is a section in the middle of the city that is currently zoned as central business district. And I wanted to pose the question to the group that if you guys think that pursuing that, that CBD is still applicable and desired for the master plan to kind of encourage that, that those mixed uses, you know, developments closer to the road, people can walk, shop, live, work, play, that kind of thing. So I would kind of welcome any comments on that.
Ms. Bouchard, would you go over what area you're speaking of again then?
The area like in the middle of the city, the crossroads. Doug, if I have this wrong, please correct me, but I believe it's like 14 mile and, and I think Grashit runs through there. There's like a section in the center of the city where essentially it almost looks like it might have been a goal to be almost like a downtown at some point. Is that? Yes, thank you. Thank you. Utica. Is that still something that the city would like to pursue? Or do you find that maybe that might not be as applicable as time has gone on?
Any discussion among the members, any?
Yeah, I think if I can say something. That we talked about quite a bit, and I know Pat Maher even had developed something and maybe went over it with you, Doug, to take some of that and, and really concentrate on that downtown district and taking it, expanding it a little to the north part, like right to Klein because of what Fraser eye care and all that's doing and, and then bring in some more. And like I talked about before, that area that's very old behind the Fraser and Utica, the what's the name of it again? But the elder. No, the elderly. Fraser Villa, and it's got different names now, but that area behind there even. And so we're looking at for some different housing opportunities. And just to open up some ideas there that could be an area for businesses that come in or investors that want to come in and invest in a small town like ours to give it a more vibrant downtown walking area. And I've, like I had said before, I was approached before as building official, having some big investors come in and then all of a sudden the economy went bad around 2007, eight, nine, 10. And things were looking there and then it, and it really never got taken any further from that point. So we, we've discussed that. And, and it's still, I think, an area that could bring a vibrant downtown and bring some more, whether it be senior housing or new housing areas, as well as bring some businesses into the downtown. So we get a little more variety than just the few restaurants that we have. And so there's a lot of opportunity there. So I don't want to put it on the, on, take it out of there. I want to definitely concentrate on helping that downtown district develop into something.
I agree. I'd like to work on that, give it support, boost it up.
Yep.
Have my hand up, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Farina, please.
Yeah, I, I was on the old downtown
Development.
Development, thank you. And trying to get the, at that time, anybody to move on it was like trying to push mud, you know, with a sieve. Wasn't very, you know, you didn't go very far, very fast. But I, I think there's a lot of potential for us there. And could open up a whole new development, if you will. So I'm all for it.
I don't have a button to put my hand up, but we, we talked probably six, seven months ago about expanding downtown up to, I think it was Klein.
Right.
And I, I think it's a great idea. I think there's a lot of potential down there.
Right. So what I'm hearing is keep that in there and then I'm thinking that maybe we can take that and almost turn it into it's almost subsection almost. So that way there can be kind of like implementations, A, B, and C. And this is, these are the moves that you can make to make this more of a thriving and vibrant downtown-like atmosphere. What else? Oh, and then something else to think about too, with commercial and economic development and especially to kind of push further along a downtown atmosphere. We would, I think that it's almost pertinent at this point to consider long-term impacts of, impacts of COVID-19 and how that kind of affects long-term commercial activity. So that could look in, look like parking for pickup, carryout. You know, when you pick up groceries or, you know, other goods like that, outdoor dining facilities, that kind of thing. So I think that that's kind of another aspect that we can consider moving forward and even just maybe a little, a little blurb in there that kind of helps form with the times. And then another part of this is just to foster and maintain relationships with successful local business owners, both commercial and industrial. The industrial presence is, is pretty prevalent in the city, and I think that that's a really great opportunity to, you know, foster those relationships and keep these business, businesses.
Ms. Bouchard?
Yeah.
I'm good. I know the city does not have an economic director, but through another course that I took, I believe that we have a connection with Detroit and maybe a good resource as you could is to reach out to the Detroit Regional. I think we have a partnership with their economic director and maybe he or she can offer you or us some suggestions or be helpful.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just taking a note. The next goal that we have identified is transportation. Overall, the main reason for this goal is to maintain the city's current system, but also identifies ways to improve it. Pretty self-explanatory there. This can mean working with applicable road, road agencies to correct high accident intersections and corridors. This could mean implementing a robust bike infrastructure plan, which will be examined as part of this plan. I examine the gaps or inefficiencies and handspins to the public transportation system. As in, you know, how can we enhance public transit stops? Enhance public transit routes, kind of see where the future that lies, especially when there are popular community employment centers and residential hubs in the city. And the city is also very accessible to neighboring communities. So I think that there could be good opportunities there. Another kind of aspect to kind of think about moving into the future, because this is a long-term plan, is support and plan for newly emerging transportation technologies such as ride sharing apps, autonomous vehicles research, properly just to kind of put it there that the city is still looking ahead and wants to keep relevant with the newly emerging technologies that younger people have been using, or even as the population of the city ages, it could be more important that seniors have accessibility to, you know, carpooling facilities or public transportation. Yeah.
Daniel, are you going to address sidewalks throughout the city? You know, we, we have a portion of old Fraser that does not have sidewalks and there are no places to ride bikes or to walk, you know, unless you do it in the street. So I would think if you're, if we're going for that kind of look, that we, we have to, you know, I mean, even, even the pictures you, you show on your screen right there, there's no sidewalk in front of a lot of those places. I don't know where that, where that is.
A few months ago, I brought that up about the sidewalks and Sarah said that the state had some kind of a program that could help Fraser with that. I'm not sure if you know what she was talking about or if you know, Doug. But I actually started a map of areas that don't have them, areas that people could walk. So I, I think that's huge.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I know, I know a lot of communities, you know, establish like a sideways, sideways, sidewalk gap program where they try to take tackle a little bit each year to fill in some of the gaps. So, and it's not something you do overnight, but over a period of 10 years or whatever, you can make some real progress and.
At least, at least there's a plan forward, you know? There is no plan at this time.
Right.
Yeah. And I, I think that sidewalks kind of, those lines are a little bit blurred and they run into, you know, numerous different goals of this plan that not only does it touch on transportation, but it also touches on residential neighborhoods for you. So you have those connectivity from, you know, residential areas to commercial community nodes or schools or parks. And so their sidewalks will definitely be included in this plan and probably multiple different areas and because it is very important in a lot of different facets. But I will be sure to make sure that they are included in this section as well. For the fourth goal, we have recreation. Also kind of self-explanatory, the main purpose of this goal is to expand and maintain the city's current outdoor recreation system, which includes non-motorized trails. I recall from the Z B A meeting last week, there was brief discussion on, sorry, was there a question? Oh. There was brief discussion on, you know, There was brief discussion on, you know, should the city be looking into and examining or in identifying areas for more parks or more public recreation facilities. So that's something that we will be looking into. And, you know, if, if the planning commission is supportive of, you know, just having that objective in there to say, you know, the city can identify opportunities for more outdoor recreation when it becomes available. And.
Excuse me, Danielle, the, the reverse of that is true also. But we talked about it, do we have too much? Too many parks and too, too big a percentage when you look at it, relationship to other communities around us. And could some of that land be utilized for housing or senior housing, you know, or something like that for development?
That makes sense. And that could also be addressed almost in two ways where you could say with new, let's say, senior housing developments to include a recreation, outdoor recreation component with that. So just kind of find a happy medium there. But keep in mind that as these recommendations are objected to move forward, they're of course subject to change. If you guys kind of say, and wait a minute, maybe we do have too much of this. But there will be an analysis conducted on, on current facilities and then we can kind of move from that point. But this kind of also coincides with Doug's discussion earlier on, there's zoning recommendations on, you know, maybe we identify these areas and then, you know, make that push towards rezoning into recreation. And then of course target and prioritize areas for new non-motorized trails and then a recommendation on to, various funding sources for those, so.
Now, I don't know how, how you feel about this, you know, but you know, the big thing now is scooters are back in Detroit. Electric scooters you can get around on. Should, should we look at making room for someplace for, for that type of that type of activity also?
Sure. I mean, there can even be brief text in there perhaps, and even in the transportation section to explore opportunities for like electronic scooter pilot program or something like that, because I know that there are funding programs available. However, I don't know where those are kind of given this post-COVID-19 world. With people touching the same thing over and over again, you know, I don't know if that's considered sanitary, if those are still operating right now. But this is a long term, oh, they are.
Yeah, they just expanded in Detroit.
Yeah, I had a friend in Chicago saying that she saw that they've got rid of them completely, but perhaps their pilot was just over. I don't know. But yeah, definitely something to look into. And then the final goal we have identified is sustain, sustainability and beautification. The main purpose for this goal is to encourage beautification elements with new and existing development while encouraging sustainability, sustainability principles. These can often be achieved, achieved simultaneously, such as encouraging permeable pavement, native plantings, LED lights. I included a photo on, of a, a area of the city that I thought kind of spoke well to the sustainability and beautification. You know, because you've got your benches, trash receptacles, screening, street trees, that kind of thing. You even have a little welcome banner there. So I think that this is a good model to kind of encourage moving forward. And then I think that another piece of this could be to target certain corridors for beautification enhancements to incorporate some of those aspects that's shown in this image where applicable. I know that some of it may not be city's jurisdiction, so I will have to mow through that. And then just for some brief next steps, basically from our discussion today, we would like to refine the goals and objectives based on your feedback. From there, we are going to conduct the public, public engagement process and refine what we have based on that. And then do the next step from there would be to develop the future land use plan and map, which is based largely in part on planning commission feedback on goals and objectives and public engagement feedback. So at this point, we were thinking of kind of presenting these goals and objectives almost in like a survey format to the public and have them kind of rank things that are the most important to them. And then as with the other questions that have been previously approved. So we may kind of morph that a little bit. Because this process has been changed a little bit since we cannot have in-person meetings.
When, when will the questionnaire go out?
I believe it was on track for August. I will double check the timeline on that, but I think that it was initially proposed. And then that would probably go through collecting comments through September.
Did you get enough feedback from us tonight, Danielle?
Um. Uh, yeah, I believe so. I do understand that this has been a meeting where there's been a lot to digest. So if people haven't had a minute to really sit and think about it, I understand that as well. I suppose just as long as we're kind of on the same page of, if everybody agrees that they like where this is going. And then also keep in mind that there will be more detail added as we continue.
Danielle, I, I'd like to request personally, I'd like to see this, these materials. Our stuff is supposed to get to us a week in advance, so we have time to look at it. Become prepared. And I understand you just coming on board and it's not a child, it's just some kind of information that I, I don't know about the rest of the people, but I, I like to read it, have some time to study it and formulate in my mind some questions before. Before we go forward.
I agree, Commissioner Farina. Could you, Mr. Richard, could you send each commissioner a PowerPoint presentation so we can, you know, do it by email so we can review it at home and.
Yep.
Give some more feedback.
Yep. Yeah, I'll convert this into a PDF and then send it to everybody that you have time to go through it. Like I said, I'm available by phone and email, so I'm welcome. Any questions, comments, or concerns, once everybody has a minute to chew on it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Very nice presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Oh yeah, what's your phone number?
Yes, that would be good. I don't know if you want to do it on air. Maybe you can send us an email.
Yeah, you can send us an email.
Yeah, I'll get the mailing list from Doug after the meeting and then my cell number will be listed in the, my emails.
Okay, thank you.
And that's about it for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Richard.
Yeah.
Make sure, is anybody in the audience? And I don't see anybody on the outside. Okay, so we will move forward and go to agenda item number eight, public communications on non-agenda items. And I believe there are none. Number nine, zoning board of appeals member liaison report.
Yes, we did have a zoning board meeting last week. And we did the same thing that the planning commission did the previous month. We authorized the report for 2019 be sent, sent to the city council. And we also went over the minutes for the January meeting that needed, you know, needed to be approved. So is my understanding that Doug mentioned that we are going to have a meeting in August at ZVA? Or somebody who's got some, something on the, I don't believe, you told us who it was, but it might be done on, on the alternate meeting date if they don't get their money in time. And I can ask Doug, did they get their money in time?
Yes, yes. The, the check cleared literally. And we, we have noticed and published for the, the regular meeting date in August. It's a say, sign, wall sign variance request for the new savvy slider slash Happy's Pizza. At the, it's kind of the east corner of Grossback and Utica.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, yeah. That's it. Everybody was online and all accounted for.
Okay. Did I understand? Did you go through the, did the ZVA go through the, the ordinance, the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Turn on board. Good. Agenda item 10, commissioners' comments and items of interest and concerns. I'll start with Commissioner Kyle.
Not at this time. I thought it was a great meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Lot of information.
It is. Commissioner Cook?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things here. It's Frazier Goodfellow season, kids. So we have the tour to Frazier on August 29th, which is the bike ride around Frazier drinking establishments. And it's also a poker card run. So we're having a meeting on Thursday. One question I have for all the members here is what do you think about a get together like that? We're expecting 25 to 50 people. So do the members of the committee here feel like that's a good idea to get people together in a group like that? Do they feel comfortable or do you think we should cancel it?
What did the Goodfellows think, Commissioner Cook? You think it's?
Well, our last meeting we had was before like the second outbreak. So we decided to go with that and the golf outing in September. But since our last meeting, we've had these outbreaks and I think what we're doing is we're trying to look for some more input from, you know, the community here. Because we don't want to spend all this money getting shirts and everything like that. And then we have to cancel it. So just looking for some input and honest answers are all I want. If, if you wouldn't feel comfortable, Madam Chair, would, would you like to come?
I can personally tell you I would not come because I
That's what I'm looking for.
Very, very careful about being in crowds. So yes, where are you holding, what facility are you holding your?
The initial start is always at the sidebar. And then we would end there. So we have several places that we're in contact with to assure that we can go there and they'd even take us. And we're trying to get outside establishments. We don't have to be inside. But it's just, it's a tough thing right now. And even our golf outing in September, it's the same thing. You get together, you have a steak dinner, you have, you know, it's at Fern Hill. But you're still in a situation where you're in a room with people. And more and more, the last couple of weeks, I've been seeing people that are just not comfortable being in crowds, inside or out. So, I don't know, we have a meeting coming up here, I think in a couple of weeks or within a couple of weeks. Maybe we'll have our meeting month, meeting for the Goodfellows and then I'll get in contact with everybody and tell you what we decided. I think we have one August 5th, right? Is the next meeting?
Correct, yes. That's right around the corner, yes.
Yeah.
They have to, like, Doug, done. From my standpoint, just to give you some input. Our church canceled their festival because there was no way to social distance. I think if you social distance, you know, but riding a bike, you can kind of social distance. But when you get into tighter quarters, my wife will not go into an inside restaurant yet. And we, we do church from home because of the, you know, being inside. And so that, that would be my, my input to you on that, you know.
Thank you. That's what I'm looking for.
But your golf outing could be, you know, Fern Hill does do barbecues. And that could be, you could eat outside. And of course, when you're golfing, you can social distance very easily.
Well, George over there definitely wants us to be there. So he's tried to come up with any ideas that anybody would have to make it a success and to have it there. I think everybody's hurting a little bit and they want, they would like these outings to happen if it's possible.
I can tell you that the Knights of Columbus, John F. Kennedy has canceled their golf outing for August because of, you know, the COVID environment.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes, sir.
If you decide to proceed and any of the establishments can, can kind of set up a temporary area outside, depending on weather, then that is something that the state is allowing local communities to facilitate. So we would just take a look at the, we would need a sketch and then through that city manager temporary use provision, we can potentially improve those. I know a little place next to Hockey Land, we've approved kind of a temporary outdoor eating area for them just to see what happens, you know.
It was shooters is one of our stops.
Yeah, but if, but if your other stops are interested and they're in the city, then we can help make it happen. You know, and this is something that most of my communities are doing. You know, it's not forever. It's not permanent, but just as a way to try to get people more space. And like Commissioner Farina said, some people are still reluctant for good reasons to eat indoors, but to provide an area where they can eat outdoors if they like. I can tell you that I know the Hockey Land retail proposal is going to come back. And part of their requested amendment is going to be adding a sizable outdoor eating area to the big boy concept. And they're doing that proactively as a reaction to Corona. Because they have a feeling, and I think it's probably a good intuition, that even when we beat COVID-19, there's likely going to be something else in the future that is going to have a similar effect. So it's just changing our built world to accommodate this new reality.
Beautiful. Thank you for that. I'll bring that up on Thursday. And if we talk to any of the establishments, I'll say the same thing. They might be interested in that too.
Thank you, Mr. Plaschinsky. I'll go, Commissioner Perry, you have any comments?
None at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Barr?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Warnick?
Just that it's, I know this, it was pretty good tonight. Dealing with the zoning ordinance, it's, I think it's a pretty big undertaking, just even though it's just rewriting things like that and clarifying. So that's good. And that's exciting that we can get that up to date more. And just looking forward for the master plan. It's a, it's a long project. It's been going a long time and I see some light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully. And, but everybody's input really comes into play and I'm, I'm really excited about that downtown thing. So other than that, that's it.
Commissioner Farina?
Hey, I think we all ought to congratulate Commissioner Warnick for becoming a grandfather for the first time.
Not yet, not till Thanksgiving.
Yeah, well, I mean.
It's, it's, it's cooking. It'll be my first time as a grandparent and my daughter had to go and double it up on me. So she's having twins.
Oh, congratulations.
So I guess that's, I'm starting, I'm not starting easy, I'm sure.
My best.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Randy.
Thank you.
And I do agree with Mr. Warnick's comments about going forward, master plan and zoning ordinance. It is exciting. Lot of work, but exciting to move forward and see all the changes that we can make for the city. A couple of comments I have is I was wondering if Mr. Plaschinsky could tell me or tell us what's the status of marijuana? Are we going to get any further documentation on that going forward soon?
Yes, for certainly we do want to circle back and get you some information. Actually, we'll, we'll have that on. Well, let me get a feeling, do we want to have our regular meeting in August? You know, there, there are no agenda items from petitioners.
The day before that is election day.
I will be on petition the first week of August also.
Would, would we like to consider having it the alternate meeting day in August?
I'm good with that.
I would be for that.
The alternate one would work better for me.
What's that?
Court.
I said the alternate one would work better for me. My, my, my kids from Texas are venturing up here the first week of August, which I'm a little nervous about, but, but later in the month would be better for me. I mean, I, I'll make the meeting no matter what, but I, it would be better if the alternate date.
Well, it sounds like we can get the marijuana stuff rolling.
Poor choice of words.
Yeah.
Words depending on your, your approach, we'll be, we'll, we'll compile the information, get some of that preliminary information to the commission at the August meeting. It sounds like we'll shoot for the alternate meeting date. And also by then we'll hopefully have the, the survey cut loose for the master plan. And we can report back on that. So I think that's a good approach. And while I'm talking, Chair Sarnicki, I think we might still have a commissioner or two, but I, I do have a quote at the end of the presentation again tonight.
And I note, notes, I was not going to forget that. Okay. But I do want to say that I, I believe we're going to cancel the August 5 meeting. I got my calendar in front of me. And then the third Thursday would be August 17.
Yep.
Do we have to make a motion on that or just?
Is it going to be a third Thursday or third Monday?
I am sorry, the third Monday. Thank you for the correction. Third Monday is August 17.
Um, I don't think you need a motion. We generally just handle the meeting dates when we shift to an alternate as a matter of administration.
Okay.
Seven, 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and can I just make a notation with you, Mr. Placzynski, some administrative items that kind of want to follow through. I want to make sure that our planning commission minutes are getting to the city council on their agenda as well as online. The minutes are not getting online again. And I want to kind of verify that notification is being sent to the finance department for the people who are attending, for the planning commissioners attending their meetings.
Okay, I'll touch base with both the, the minutes being posted and the attendance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Which that may have completely been something that they were just expecting to happen. And I, you know, so if there's anything I need to send to the finance department, we will get that caught up.
Okay, thank you. And we're ready for your code of meeting.
All right.
By the way, Chair Manchurian, before he does that, please mark me late and spank me, but mark me here.
Nobody's spanking you, Frank.
Give me a hall pass.
Okay, so tonight's quote is, "And so with the sunshine and the great burst of leaves growing on the trees, just as things grow in fast movies, I had the familiar conviction that life was beginning over again with the summer." And that's from The Great Gatsby by F. Scott Fitzgerald.
Very cool.
Very nice, yes. You know, and I think I left off Mr. Andrews for any comments. I apologize. Mr. Andrews, you have any comments this evening?
Nothing further at this time.
Okay, Mr. Richard, I apologize too. You have any comments this evening?
About Joanne?
I did, Joanne, I did just, I did, to Joanne, you have no comments, right, Joanne?
No, I, no, I already said I had none.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn meeting.
I move.
Okay, and support?
I'll support.
Okay, thank you. So it's moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Kyle to adjourn the meeting. It is now eight, I think eight fifty-seven, I think. All of you have a good night. Thank you for a great meeting.
You too.
Thank you.